I have a small footprint.
Yeah, but you're not sitting on your feet. All right, item eighteen, Edmond Baker Fire Marshal, item eight, contract with Wilson County Volunteer Fire Department, Emergency Medical Services, Emergency Service District, ESD number one, ESD number two, and ESD number three.
Okay Judge, the, uh, I talked to, uh, actually Albert and I had a discussion last week about the ESD and what they wanted. I didn't have contact with them, but I talked to Eagle Creek's attorney. And our understanding at this time as far as ESD number two is, is that they would rather the county contract with fire and EMS and directly than contracting with them and them giving up the money. Now Eagle Creek Fire covers more or less exclusively within the ESD. Eagle Creek EMS has coverage of course of the ESD as well as outside the ESD. I did request something in writing from ESD number two to that effect and they meet tonight. At this point, ESD number two has a contract with EMS but not one with fire, but that should be resolved tonight also. The fire chief is here, she's, and she has told me that it's on their agenda for tonight.
So, uh, the details of the coverage inside and outside are all worked out?
Yes.
If we just continue our contract with both?
It's my understanding that nothing as far as coverage would change.
So, so the funding, just to make it clear, the funding that we have provided in the past is sufficient to take care of the areas that are concerned from, from an EMS standpoint, which is your area primarily.
On the outside of the ESD.
And then we've got the Coast area.
Well, that, that funding usually supports the entire area. The whole entire area, so.
So now they're receiving additional funds from ESD number two, so.
And then they will take care of the EMS and the fire, right? Yes, it'll be two separate contracts. No, but outside of the district area. Yeah, well, fire doesn't cover outside the ESD.
That's right.
For the most part, there are a few little glitches, little properties here and there that were missed or.
But not huge.
But nothing makes.
The most you may, yeah.
So eventually the, the fire from getting this right, or the ESD number two, they don't, they're not gonna contract, the ESD is not gonna contract with the county?
Correct. That's my understanding, I haven't seen it in writing yet, but that is my understanding that they don't want to contract fire or EMS with the county, that the county contract with them separate.
We didn't have to face that with number one. But with ESD number one, that was never an issue.
In your packet I gave you, I have a blank copy of ESD number one's contract and it's, it's more or less the same contract we had last year that all of us agreed upon.
Right, I've got so many packets, I don't know where yours looks like.
You don't, uh.
Oh.
The ESD don't want funding from the county?
Correct.
Right.
We're going to go to fire EMS. We're writing contracts that we've always had.
Because we have separate funding for fire departments and for the ambulances, so are we going to have?
That'd still be separate, it'd be the same as it has been.
Okay, so we're not gonna stop funding to fire department now that they're.
No, we, what we, what we, we just won't be sending any to the ESD.
Right.
It'll be the same as it's always been, it goes to the fire department EMS.
Now, I think the past year we did fund the ESD some.
But the fire, the fire don't cover the real area outside the ESD, right?
That's correct.
So really, the money that we fund the fire department, we don't have to get that money?
Yes, as a moral deal we do because we, these people voted a tax on themselves.
Right.
We funded fire departments EMSs all these years. So for us to withhold it from those folks would be unfair to them if we withhold that money that could.
No, we're not, we're not trying to, we're just, the wording, the way you said it, that if we give the money, who, who's gonna take care of that money? Not the fire department.
We give it directly to the fire department.
The fire department.
Yes, just like we have in the past.
What about EMS?
Same thing with EMS, we'll give it directly to EMS. Nothing will, nothing will funnel through the ESD, uh, as of today. You know, that may change tonight with the data.
Giving it to the institution itself.
To the agency itself, but the ESD is a taxing unit. And then the fire department and the EMS are actually the ones that, that do the service.
From my perspective, I'm open to either way. If, if the ESD wanted to go, wanted to handle it, then I'm open considering that. But since they're not open to it, then I'm fine with giving it to.
Well, yeah, the fact that they're getting along and working it out just simplifies things for us.
And as opposed to last year, when we looked at, at dealing with it on a, on a monthly basis or whatever. You know, what, what we were, what we were trying to do then is to encourage the two of them to work together. Whatever it is we've done in the past is fine with me.
They what?
They will make calls now outside of the ESD when we give the money to them. Okay, that's, that's what I'm.
Yeah, well, you have to cover, this contract has in it, they will cover.
No.
You said no.
The fire, off Garrett.
Go ahead.
Okay, can I say something? We still have a mutual aid agreement with the counties, so if Laverne needs us or Forestville, we're still gonna enroll and respond to that. I mean.
And the fire departments have to cover the same area they have covered before.
Which we agree.
But, and we understand that, but if Coast needs them, they will be there.
Oh, yeah, that's always the.
Well, that's, that's all we're saying, so.
In the contract, it says fire departments will cover their ESM which is emergency service number, which is a carry. And that encompasses the ESD number one boundaries, okay? In the EMS contract, it says the same thing, they will cover their ESM, but it doesn't encompass just the ESD. It also covers outside of there. The contract is to cover the whole ball of wax, not, now we're talking EMS and fire, but fire will cover their area, EMS will cover their area, the whole thing, not parts of it.
Yeah, what, what has been their coverage in the past as opposed to what it is?
That's correct.
What it is now.
It's not this trend, that's correct.
And so if they have a need up in your area, somebody's gonna come.
And for the auditor, it just simplifies it, that helps out those to the entity, that's the rest of it.
And, and ESD number one has voiced their opinion of the county contracting with them and giving them the, the funds to them, and they worked that out with the fire department, which is fine. But that is what they use to justify that their taxpayers and their ESD going outside of their area and helping other departments in the other parts of the county.
Mutually.
It's mutually, yes, correct.
And we'll have a similar situation.
In ESD number two, point three?
In three, but since this is just for EMS.
Right. Yeah, and, and we'll, we'll work on that one for next year, hopefully everyone will be up for it by then. There are attachments with these, uh, this is just what requirements we have, or we, we request. This has a lot to do with NIM, FEMA, a bunch of requirements that the federal government puts on us as well as the state that Leanne and I have to deal with. And also in your packet, there's a, it's called the responder training. That will be called attachment number D in the contract. It is the level of training that these responders will be requested to be at and numbers on that. It's all in the contract, same as it was last year.
Okay.
I'll give it a little air.
Here, you need that, you want to touch on it?
There you go.
Okay, item B, backup dispatching through EMS dispatch for DSDs and EMSs.
I've talked to several of the commissioners, some of them have tried it out. The, what it is Judge is, it's a, it's a way of dispatching via a phone. Now, you, it still goes through the sheriff's department. The sheriff's department gets the nine one one call, they call the call out to whoever it goes to, and then it sends it out to the radios or plectrons that these guys carry around. Well, now there is a way, a means of sending it to a telephone. Stockdale and Laverne have been, Laverne's had it for about five months now. Stockdale has had it for a little over a month. And they are, our, our response as far as members, volunteers showing up is higher because they don't have to pack the radio or the pager around when they go out to eat dinner or something like that with their family. They don't have to carry this radio, but they're still alerted that there is a call going on in their, whatever department they're in. It also is real good for when they're at work. You know, you're at work, they're not gonna let you off work to go to this fire, this EMS call, but when you get into town, if it's a big fire, you know that there has been a fire going on, you may need to go by the station or call and find out if you can.
Does it be a text message?
It can be, it's delivered either all three ways or one of any three ways. It's text message, an actual phone call, or with smartphones, there is an app that you can put on your phone and it will send it through the internet, via the internet.
What's the cost?
Uh, I, it's under forty-four hundred dollars a year for all fire departments, all EMSs. I have talked to Verna about, uh, the training money that, that is allotted to fire departments. It's rare that that gets used. Even half of it gets used up, which is eight thousand dollars. I know that I've talked to half of the fire chiefs and EMSs, I've talked more than that, but half of them know what it's about and know what it's, what it's doing. And they agree that using that money for that is way more important than using it than, than them having to worry about whether or not they're gonna spend it on training because they haven't been spending it on training in the past. They have a request for the funds in the past. The other thing that's real good about this is we're about to go through some major communications changes in our county as far as fire and EMS dispatching. And the last thing we want is for there to be a hiccup and it not go through whether it's because the radios weren't programmed properly or whether their pagers weren't operating properly. And this is like a fail safe. I talked to the company a couple of weeks ago. The equipment that Stockdale has and the equipment that Laverne has will be used, utilized for this. There will be no charge for equipment, this is just for an annual service fee of, an annual, uh, fee for, for all the fire and EMS. We estimated about how many, there is no contract. This company works on a month-to-month basis, we can pay them for a year, but if at any time during that year he looks at it and says, "We need to make adjustments or changes to this," then, then we can, you know, we have the option of shutting off or making those changes.
Russell, do we have enough information up here to give the direction to take that money from the, uh, training fund utilized there, within this, review and approve?
I think there's plenty up here to approve this, I mean, it would be better if you enter the GID amount by next time that fits within the budget. Move money from fire and training to dispatch.
And there's no limit, no number?
There's no limit to, well, there is a limit, but it's, it's not. Text messages or you can do a bunch of text messages. I, it's like almost unlimited. It's how many users you can put on it.
Yeah, or a number of users.
Yes, there are limits, but we're talking two or three hundred is what we're looking at, so.
Well, well above what our current.
Yeah, well, it's gonna be well above what we're talking about.
You know, as, as we've talked about before, in, in time when volunteerism for this is, is becoming more difficult, anything we can do to make it easier for them?
Yeah, no, I've talked to both entries, they like that idea. Okay. See, I haven't talked to them. No, they like that idea, two of the ones I had to talk to, I did talk to them. And Coast was the other, I talked to everybody else.
Is this something where they can also, departments can use it to send out, just to like departments to remind people about training or?
I wouldn't advise too awfully much of that. Text messages, yes, you don't wanna be sending pages out because the one cause in this that can vary if we're not careful is the voice phone calls. And we gotta limit how many people we put on.
And for a training now, y'all normally do that in-house anyway.
Well, we have other means, other, we have other funding means, yes, we have other funding means.
But I'm talking about the, the information that you have in training, I'd say y'all, y'all got your cell phones utilized or whatever. And it's not coming.
Yeah, well, yeah, there's other means to do that with, yeah.
Real quick, I mean, budget for fire training to what, when you set up a two point?
Dispatch for volunteer fire departments and.
He dispatch.
He dispatch.
You may wanna keep Kennerbury's fire chief off of this list.
His wife doesn't say no, he can be on there. I put, I put Albert as a pile on Stockdale that he said he wanted off there. We got too many rattles in there.
I'm just curious, I'm not, I'm not quite clear, this forty-four hundred that, that you're talking about includes all of the fire and EMS in Wilson County?
Yes.
Except for Coast.
Yes, sir.
The fine detail on this, just, you know, if you don't know more about it, each, each department's gonna be able to have a sub-account. They're gonna be able to set up their people themselves and deal with their own people. And we're gonna have to limit how many people get voice calls. Most of it's gonna be text message or via the smartphone app.
Item C.
Okay, no, no, back to B.
Do we need the phone on there?
Yes. The chair.
Item C, Burn Ban, part of all of the county, we give them two.
I've got this one y'all can look at, this is a fourteen day outlook, remember I told some of you, I, I had seen that before. Y'all can pass that around, let's see where Wilson County is predicted to be in fifteen days. The reality is that this one is, is a little bit easier to see because it gives you the countywide average. We're gonna be about five hundred.
All right.
We all agree with that. I think we all agree with, we're, we need it.
The what, the Burn Ban?
Yeah.
We're borderline Judge, well, here's, here's the problem, I'm, I haven't seen the call, there hasn't been any fire calls. You know, if, if there's been, you know, a few calls, you know, five or six a week, we'd be ready to go, but I haven't seen them. I don't know, I don't know what they're doing.
The magic number is what?
Four, uh, five seventy-five is what the state likes.
Well, we can wait and, we can give that back.
Y'all have a meeting in December twenty-seventh, right?
You want me to put it back on?
Yes, ma'am, please.
And we passed a long time ago where any one commissioner can contact the fire marshal and place it on.
No.
It's not, I mean, for their precinct, so.
Look, look, the eastern part of my precinct is in the five to six hundred range right now.
But the fires we've had out there have been usually, we have one oil fire which was electrical in nature and nothing burned with the oil in the railroad ties, only the grass. We knocked it down in a heartbeat, I mean, surprised. Now, I'm sure after the freeze tonight, we might be talking a different story, but as dry as it's been, I don't think we'll see a difference in the color of the grass. Uh, right now, we're at five, four, four fifty-six. Uh, the high is five ninety-eight and the low is three seventeen. That doesn't take into account the rains last night. This is from yesterday.
What's that?
Uh, that Albert had, and they had it before.
They had.
And Laverne's had rains too, didn't they?
They ringed it up themselves.
So I guess there's no reason to have any action on that.
All right, moving on to these, restriction area on fireworks things.
We were, I would put, put this over there so we can make sure the deposit knows that we are aware that there could be fireworks coming this year. The problem was, is, uh, as I advise the commissioners, the KBDI has to be at five seventy-five. Now, we've spread that a little bit thinking it would be at five seventy-five in a, in a, by the fifteenth of December. And it does, it's not, right now they're saying we're gonna be at five, five seventy-five after the first of the year.
So the magic number's the fifteenth?
We have to have adopted this by the fifteenth of December, but we're, and it.
Well, we have to meet those requirements before.
We don't meet, we're nowhere near it.
And you know that there's a, a law, I think legislated, supposed to pass next year about the fireworks also concerning this, what you're saying? Then now we might have the, the authority to.
You might get a countywide authority at any time, yeah. But right now we don't.
We don't have it.
Yeah. So I, you know, I really don't think we can, I don't feel comfortable saying that we could restrict any fireworks issue, you know, due to the, the state.
I see that. All right, Russell, item nineteen, A, consider taking action on location agreements with producer of the Devil's Dale Blues and movies for use of the Wilson County Jail Museum for one day of seminar.
You have that's A, and C, the next one will be to appoint somebody in Wilson County to be the county's onsite representative of all that's going on, and I'll re-just, because he's with the Historical Society and.
And he's always wanted to do the movie stuff.
And the other.
I want a the autograph now.
Production company that offers, this is a student film basically, we're giving two hundred dollars to the Historical Society. And, uh, I thought it would be better to, it's just, um, the county is gonna have the Historical Society, have somebody out there, this is possibly on the county and give the Historical Society their services, which they are onsite with. And I sent, I sent a proposed location agreement to the producer and he sent me one back and he hasn't told me a lot of objections. If he had the private thing on a location agreement, I said, I just sent him the state one.
When is this taking place?
February ninth as well, I'm not sure exactly.
With the caveat that they meet Russell's contract agreement and everything in motion, Commissioner Gomis and Mr. Maradona.
And who are you appointing to represent?
Rob.
If he has no objection, if he has no objection.
He's gonna be there anyway.
Or playing to be there anyway.
But the thing is this, I asked him, what do I, can you see it at the movie theater? You know, not really, it's a twelve year movie. They're gonna be filmed about in two minutes at the jailhouse around very fifteen, at six.
You want us to call you Ralph Cruz or Ralph Wayne?
Item D, consider taking action on amending recreational vehicle park regulations to add higher suppression and safety requirements similar to those in subdivision at least housing parks.
And on this, I think the county doesn't necessarily have to do with taking some impact assessments because this is a health and safety rule regulation. And basically I just cut the case of the leased housing development rule, the way this one's been worked out, and put them into RV parks, and you see everything is underlined, is new, and then just renumber the last three. Obviously change the, basically if they have fire hydrants and they're served by a good water system, they have to have fire hydrants out there and if they don't, then they need someone else, so they.
Internet's a computer based. It's all.
And did not give this to Leanne, it's almost forty, but subdivision with private roads, we had a developer that came in and we've been making them put the non-access agreement, so basically they want to be able to sell roads or sell lots until the roads are finished and then develop, and who has, he can post a bond. And this just sort of codifies that, it says you either do this thing where you have a non-access agreement until the roads are built, or you can post a bond or whatever, guarantee it's gonna be built, just like you were gonna get the roads to the county. And you also have to give the county a duty trust to secure the construction of the roads and, uh, roads are not, I don't know, against them, if they bar against them. So the loan board is, has to supply their, the county's duty trust. And that's just because I was concerned that if y'all ever did pull a bond, you know, you have the county money then and you couldn't allow to spend it on, on private roads. And you also foreclose the roads and you have county roads that you want, or land that you want, you call it county road and use the money to fix it.
Commissioner Gomis, Mr. Maradona. Item A, consider taking action on amending recreational vehicle park regulations to require submission of applications determined by first business day of the month prior to appearing before the development of these vehicles.
And I think Leanne has just found that we've had it as the fifteenth and there's been some complicated issues with some of these RV parks or leased housing parks, uh, applications, or all the applications we're getting in, and she just wanted to roll that back to the first. So we've had a whole month for people to let her office look at it and then tell people what they needed to fix before they, when the agenda.
But this doesn't mean they can come in on the first and be on the agenda for.
Right.
Right.
Motion, Commissioner Kyle, Commissioner Maradona.
And then G is a duplicate that I think that was supposed to be, uh.
It's recovered now.
Yeah, it's, it's.
That's not a duplicate, that's, I see. That was the one with the spacing of the fire hydrants. Along the road verge.
Oh, no, yeah, G is wrong, sorry.
It's not for fire suppression, it was supposed to be the one for the spacing of the fire hydrants.
All right, well, I'll have to ask that that be put back on for next time, I can just, I'm just trying to use.
Back to, we're talking G.
G.
Back from the G.
And then on H, uh, I mean, I had looked at the, at the subdivision rules on fire and it looked to be basically identical to.
No, that's the same thing there too in the subdivision rigs and the RV park rigs.
It's about spacing of the fire hydrants, okay. All right, I'll, I'll get those on and I'll make sure we have that.
Twenty-seven. Twenty-seven.
And then, on the next one, when the leased housing development rules were passed, Cranston and Burgundy, two, a couple of things were struck out on the copy that y'all voted on, uh, that said that you can't be more than a hundred and fifty feet from the improved surface of the streets and you can't have flag tracks for your lots. And I wanna put those back in because that is a whole regulation dealing with, a lot of people do with their real property, uh, we're gonna have to publish a taking some impact assessment and put an ad in the paper about that. So that's thirty days, it's gonna be in the paper, so I didn't know if y'all want to set a hearing on that for the second meeting in January or the first one in February? We can go ahead and make sure it's in the paper.
I'd say the second one in January.
Yeah, I'll set up. I don't know what date that is.
It's January the twenty-eighth.
Okay, so it's twenty, like, and then the paper.
Do we need to make an motion?
Yes, we do.
Motion to set a public period on the twenty-eighth and then to publish a taking some impact assessment.
You mean, if this passes, that no one can put one more than a hundred and fifty feet from the road line?
Well, that includes the improved road that you go up inside your RV park.
Basically the lot, the pad that it sits on, the back of it, you don't wanna, I guess, you don't want a space that's deeper than a hundred and fifty feet?
Right.
Right?
Yeah, the road, you include the road inside the RV park.
Okay, item J, consider.
Do we need the phone on there?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to put it down from the public hearing. Item J, consider taking action, rename the leased housing park regulations to lodging development regulations.
And on, on this one, I think that the reason for it is that we've had people come in claiming that, well, I'm, I'm gonna be, not leasing these out for folks, I'm gonna have my own employees in here in all these cabins, or I'm gonna, well, you said I'm gonna have a contract with one oil company and, so rather than have folks in Burgundy not comply with regulations, Leanne and I thought we might consider changing the name, say lodging development regulations. Or y'all could come up with a different name if you want to, just, this is on the regulations of the cabins, one of the cabin regulations.
It's not talking about homes?
No.
No, no, it's just change the name, we consider change the name.
Commissioner Gomis, thank you, Commissioner Maradona. All in favor?
All right.
Good. Can I ask a question before we adjourn, uh, Commissioner Wilson? I thought we were gonna, I'm, I'm trying to get, I put my next action in on this. I thought it was gonna get signed today and I'm gonna get it signed again, we'll be back in a year.
But, oh, that's on the, feeling? That, that you didn't, you, Mr. Wilson, work that out, it, it proves, you know what I mean? That, that you didn't, you, Mr. Wilson, work that out, it, it proved, so I mean, it's not nothing. Adam 20, Adam J., you still permit double take to approach waters, I thought we were gonna stand room once, anyone precinct? Motion Commissioner Gammes, second Commissioner file. Adam B., you still permit 454, spring horse, flat operation, Wood Valley Drive.
Should we probably do E also?
And E. B, what?
B and E.
B and E?
How about C and D? Well, B and E are precinct four.
Okay, B and E, precinct four, motion. Commissioner Wiley, second, Commissioner file, all in favor? Back to C and D also. Oh, three, E. Precinct three, you still permit 455, 456, motion Commissioner Marath, second, file, all in favor? Down now, the field, the five nine, also permit number two for... One, two, permit forty-six and forty-seven, Hunter Island, two fifty-one, two oh one. Motion Commissioner file, second Commissioner, uh, Gammes, all in favor? And G, report on collection event.
This was our largest collection event ever. Uh, we had a hundred and sixty-nine vehicles come through. And they brought in stuff for two hundred, over two hundred households. And if you look at that, that spreadsheet, that's a result of the surveys. Um, people entered, they were given a survey and asked questions and they had turned it in at the end of the line and that's the results of, of uh, their answers to the survey. So it's obvious that they uh, would like to continue having those collection events and would like to have them on a regular basis. Or even uh, individuals that indicated they'd be willing to pay a fee. And we got many, many compliments from everybody that day and just putting together the surveys, there were very few that really even made comments, but the ones that did, you can see, uh, the majority of them are positive. Most of them are about whether or not they pay for it. We had only one negative comment, um, and that was for the wait in line. Um, other than that, you know, we, we received mostly just compliments and everybody's loving, you know, the event, majority of them. Whether they wrote it here or just told us in line, I just want you to know that many said, you know, we need to have more of these and at least two a year, that was what I kept hearing, so. Uh, and, and as you can see, that number, question number eight talks about if, if we had more frequent collections, would you be willing to pay for them? And so you can see all of the numbers there, people are willing to pay for them, if there's some way for them to do that, either through a one-time fee or, or a monthly fee.
Judge, if I could please comment, uh, my husband participated, he's very organized and got all of his stuff ready. He said it went very well, he was very impressed with Leanne and Karen. And uh, he said that the wait wasn't too long and he doesn't have a whole lot of patience and he's one of the people that would be willing to pay a fee. He said it was worth his time and he's not much for wanting just to chunk it in the trash and hope they pick it up. You know, because we do worry about the environment and where it goes back into the soil. But I do wanna comment, these ladies did a fine job and whoever else was there, and it was very good.
We had a group of our Wilson County Second Responders, uh, search team that helped out at the event also, along with uh, some individuals from Scottsdale and the Burnie Fire Department who are part of the hazmat team. And we had the hazmat trailer out there just in case, you know, we had an incident took place. But yeah, this was the largest event we ever had. Largest amount of participations that we've ever had.
I'd love to see these twice a year, but my concern is, is with government funding being what it is, whether or not we're gonna be able to do them once a year.
Right.
Did, did, did we do one last year?
We did not, no, there was a year lapse that we didn't have funding.
They're very important to China.
And yeah, remember that we don't have funding for one for next year either because the, their funding was already, it's already done for next year. And so, and we got one grant for it, which was for this year, so we don't have funding.
If he'd have been nice with Commissioner four, would have brought us breakfast, I understand? He could have brought us breakfast.
Wow.
I didn't, I didn't realize you ate breakfast.
And just so y'all know, the River and Nori helps fund these and we are willing to, you know, maybe help fund some more, um, but it would have to be a partnership where the county would fund and park and we could fund park. You know, that's Karnes County, that's what they wanted to do, they wanna do two a year, well, we can't fund two a year, obviously, and so, um, we're gonna help them, but um, I realize they're probably getting a little bit much more money from Shell than you guys or, I mean, the oil companies, but uh, but they, they did vote to do that, so that is an option, I just want you to know because your citizens are saying that it, that it is needed.
What kind of participation have you done in the past?
Well, we always donate at least two thousand for this, you know, for each county, um, and uh, we could probably increase that and uh, then, and this, on this particular event, besides the two thousand, we funded the electronics. Um, and that total I just got was two thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety-four cents, so that's, you know, a good amount. And then, um, we uh, also, uh, you know, did some of the miscellaneous expenses as well and of course our time and everything too. But um, and just so you know, on the electronics, we got just in televisions alone, five thousand, six hundred and four pounds of televisions. And uh, then two thousand nine pounds of scrap, whatever that is. We're hoping they're running out of televisions, 'cause those are the ones that really cost.
And you can't turn in a console.
Yeah, exactly, you can't do that, the wooden ones, that's right.
As a little dog.
What are the end results of, do you know what the end results of those consoles think, or how do they dispose of them?
Yeah, well, actually, the company that we use, they recycle everything and so, um, they actually take them all apart and, and, you know, either, either something is remade out of the material that sold to somebody who remade something, or, you know, whatever, but it's all recycled.
And, and did y'all say something about the medicine, this was the first time?
Oh, and yeah, and this, the first time we did medicine in, in Wilson County. Um, we've done it in the other two counties just recently, just so you guys know for Sarah. And y'all's participation was awesome, um, we got three large boxes, we're estimating about a hun, over a hundred pounds of medicines alone. So those are things that are not gonna go into the groundwater, you know, um, or, or whatever, reach into the soil because they won't be thrown in the, in the trash or...
The precinct three pharmacy is open on Tuesday. Have way at least...
We, we, uh, the, the bill for the hazardous waste contractors, um, wasn't as much as we budgeted for, so we've got an extra five thousand there.
Yeah.
Well, hold it, hold it, I spoke with the APAS up there.
Does that one turn at all?
Fires and, and he put on a agenda for the, for the county area. To look at, they can help us in the, they like the concrete companies are burning them and, because they need to get dry and uh, and uh, then there's places in Hayes County that makes like freight trucks and so forth, so um... But collectively, we can come together in the counties, maybe we can have a, and I think I mentioned to Commissioner Wiley, one individual over Scottsdale, it's got about eight truck vans stacked over there, it's been stacked for a year or so. That if you get those vehicles up and put one in each yard or something, or where you store them and then you get a load, if, if this works out with all the counties. Or even if it ends up that we make some kind of agreement with those tractor companies where you just go offload them unless it gets full, they can use them to burn, you know, I mean...
Well, precinct two has a, has a tractor that, that can actually pull those, I suppose.
John, do you hear?
Yes.
Just as a comment, just remember we'll have the spring summit, so if that's something you wanna bring up, I mean, maybe too Sarah can help, you know, with that, so, but, you know, they would wanna hear it from you, knowing that, you know, the counties are asking for something like that.
Yeah, absolutely, definitely. Put those off the road, run out of the pond, we love to throw those tires in the pit.
Yes, they do, we know that.
And make sure after we leave today, pick up our shoes and put up some tires.
And I'm H., understand this, variant request, each county involved with business groups.
Okay, this was brought before the committee, um, quarter six, and it's been in favor of our organization. Uh, let's see, it was spreading out a track. And it, yeah, next to the, the business there and it, it met all the requirements for road furnish and...
Adam, I, recreational vehicle park variant request, March Rinsky, let them all down.
And this was also brought before the committee, um, this was a situation where the property being developed, part of it is in the city, partners in the county and they asked for a variance to follow our regs and they're gonna follow the city's regs a hundred percent, so.
Motion Commissioner Wiley, second, Commissioner Marath, all in favor? Okay, minutes, everybody have time to review the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Marath, Mr. Gammes, all in favor? Adam, going on financial report?
Uh, if you look at twenty, that's supposed to be actually twenty-one, and if you're none of those, twenty-one, twenty-two.
I have the four twenty-one.
Did you get any of everything?
Yes. Straightforward, the only thing I have to do is I left the original on the copy machine, so I'll just have to switch the first page with Venus with my original signature. Alright, but everything is straightforward. Hannah, I'll tell you, I'm gonna transfer four point five million dollars to Texas for this.
Motion, Commissioner Gammes, Mr. Marath, all in favor? Favorite personnel, okay, Adam twenty-two.
Sylvia Flores was terminated, eleven twenty-seven, two thousand and twelve, Department four twenty as a correction officer. Richard Cervantes was hired, uh, eleven twenty-six, uh, two thousand and twelve, Department four twenty, uh, two thousand dollars a month as a correction officer. Dana Lopez was hired, twelve three, two thousand and twelve, Department four twenty, two thousand dollars a month as a dispatcher. Cynthia Stafford was hired, twelve three, two thousand and twelve, Department five thirty, twelve fifty an hour as a M and A volunteer, uh, CO, ORD, coordinator, coordinator, okay. Richard Cervantes resigned, twelve five, two thousand and twelve, Department four twenty as a correction officer. Rebecca Martinez was hired, twelve eight, two thousand and twelve, Department four twenty, two thousand dollars a month as a correction officer. Kelly Layer was hired, twelve six, two thousand and twelve, Department three twenty, twenty-five dollars an hour, part-time county attorney assistant. Uh, Preston Welch resigned, eight thirty-one, two thousand and twelve, Department four twenty as a correction officer.
Any comments, questions, motions? Commissioner Marath, Mr. Marath, all in favor? Okay, bills, Adam twenty-three.
There's uh, one bill in here.
Yeah, that's the very first thing on the page, it's not a bill, it's the report.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Just for me to have?
It's just FYI.
Yeah, it's FYI, it's, it's the uh, the bill with forms that, y'all talked about earlier, the contract. Oh, okay, okay. And, yeah, and, and, I mean, we talked about the contract, but no one had ever really decided on anything, so I just kinda wanted to point it out that it's there, it's, it's in, there being paid.
Oh, that's what this is?
Uh, that's the one, yes. Is it eight and six for the initial, and the six for the, uh, phase part of the... And there it actually...
This is my question.
Yeah, I just put a copy in with everybody so that y'all would be aware of it, just, I wanna jump out like that.
I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
You gotta keep an eye on her.
I'm counting them all, did it go in the commissioner's court?
Go by and sign a book.
It was in evil.
This is mine.
She done it Friday and you came by?
This is mine.
You came by Friday?
But I don't know, this is mine. But I don't know the...
This is for your...
No, a lot of material.
I know, but this is, this is for my people for birthdays, but this is for a one...
I need a one for three oh four.
It's not, she was here. Oh, okay. See, all she tried.
Sorry, I thought it was me. Sorry. That's fine, you have a shrink.
We'll see what happens.
Thank you.
Everyone had an opportunity to read their deals?
Yes, sir. Motion. Commissioner Gammes, Chris Wiley, all in favor? And we're in terms of...
Oh, okay.
We need a discount.
But I'm gonna send that piece in.
Thirty-two thousand?
It's that pretty good.
We need a discount.
Okay, then it all just...
By the way, isn't that...
Yeah, it's amazing, that's how we got that F I I. I like that one.